We have you guys signing.
Daryl's mayor.
Court.
Court. What do you, are you going two or four? Three. So see, you're fine. You can sign.
Okay.
Three, four years, and three, two years, and then mayor. So you can't sign more than that. Cause you're.
Okay, come on, come on, come on.
I'm a break.
Hey, stop out, we're doing things over here.
Yeah, come on, come on. I'm gonna die on this job here, ready?
Whack, whack.
All right.
Nobody knows me or likes me.
Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and call this meeting back to order after our recess. We held executive session and we are not going to have any more action on item number one this evening. The, hang on for a second. The executive session pursuant to discussion, consideration of employment, assignment, salaries, or disciplining of town manager, Robert Smith. What we are going to do is we will continue that and I believe next Tuesday night, is that correct, Ms. Lewis? We'll, we'll go ahead and continue that next Tuesday night. Our next item of business is item number three, presentation and discussion regarding fiscal year 2016, 2017 preliminary budget. Mr. Duffy.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This evening I passed out two little handouts, one, just the schedule of the departments that'll be here this evening and tomorrow night. This evening's schedule includes, Laura will be doing a brief presentation on our human resource benefits and her department of human resources. Cecilia will take over all the general services, divisions, and related departments. And the judge will be here a little after seven and she'll finish up the meeting almost. So just let you know she's coming. Tomorrow night's the big night, we're the big dollars. We're gonna start with the police department, development services, and then of course all the public works and the capital improvement plan. So that's where the majority of the dollars will be spent, for sure. I have just a quick, little, brief presentation that I'll turn over to Laura and we'll just keep moving along. The one thing I did want to say is we're presenting to, to the town council a balanced budget. So we've got the revenues and expenses to equal. Essentially, we've, we're fully funding our reserves in most of the departments, water being the only exception. We are, have a strong contingency balance in the general fund, we're going from three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand to four-hundred thousand. So at this point, we've, we've taken all the department's requests, put them in, estimated revenues, and we're still, I think we're gonna be just like next year, just like this year, gonna roll over several hundred thousand to a half million dollars into next year's budget. So, total dollar-wise, we're looking at a budget that's actually decreased by nine percent from about twenty-four million down to twenty-two million. The biggest part of that is, last year we had the Prescott Water acquisition in there, four and a half million. I've left two million dollars for water acquisitions in the budget, so that's where the majority of the decrease comes from. The general fund, essentially, we're rolling over six-hundred thousand dollars from this year's budget. We're, we're gonna, we're planning on using two-hundred thousand of that in next year's budget. And that rollover is, we, we've received the revenues, but we didn't spend them all, so we have six-hundred thousand dollars in cash left. And it's, it's gonna be between five-hundred and fifty and six-hundred and a quarter in there. We'd like to use two-hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget, and four-hundred thousand we'd like to just put in the bank, in our reserves, and help build our reserve, our general fund reserve balance up. Our reserves should increase from about two million seven to almost three million dollars. And you notice I put a plus there, I think it's gonna be a little bit higher, and that's where I'm projecting the reserves will be at the end of this coming budget year.
Good.
So we're seeing a good, steady, slow growth. I think it's very healthy that the community adds the reserves a few hundred thousand dollars a year. I just think it's the rainy day fund, and it's, it's a, it's a very prudent way to go. Contingencies are four-hundred thousand. The contingency funds are funds that we just put a plug figure in, and I guess you could describe them as, just in case we need money for something we forgot the budget for, if you want, just give it a description. That's what they're for. We don't use them unless something comes up that we need to use them. And as you know, the budget is just a plan, we're trying to project everything that we need next year, but things come up throughout the year. And our HERF subsidy, and this is the amount we're taking from the general fund, putting in the HERF fund so we get more monies on roads, we've increased from fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand. In the HERF fund, revenues have decreased from eight-hundred-seventy-five to eight-hundred-and-fifty-three, and this is the HERF revenues. But I think in the state's budget, it looks like we might get a little bit more, so it's probably gonna be about eight-seventy-five if I was gonna guess. So our HERF funds are gonna stay flat year over year. The one thing about the state estimates or league estimates we get for HERF funds historically, they've always been low. Last year's estimate was around eight-hundred-and-fifty, and we've collected eight-seventy-five. So they've always been on the, on the conservative side. We're using about thirty-five thousand dollars of carryout funds next year in the HERF funds. Unfortunately, even with all that, our road material budget has gone from a hundred-and-fifty-five to one-twenty-five. So it's sort of going the wrong way, and it's one of the issues that we need to address in the next budget year. Our water enterprise fund, like I said, we have two million for the water system acquisitions just as a placeholder. Our capital improvement fund subsidy, however, was reduced from a hundred-and-fifty to seventy-five-thousand. That's very positive. You know, we're getting the amount that we're taking from the general fund to support the water fund, it's starting to go down. Now, my future projections are holding about seventy-five until we see some, you know, new housing growth. We did increase our customers from six-thirty-three to six-fifty-eight, up four percent, mostly new homes, but a lot of new accounts coming on from vacant homes, we know that's happened. Our sewer, we're investing under six-hundred, but I just rounded it up to six-hundred thousand in plant upgrades through the next year, and part of that includes what we've already invested this year. We're gonna pay for that, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand from the repair and replacement fund that we've been putting away for all these last ten years, we're gonna use that cash, and we're gonna dip into the sewer funds' fund balance for about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. We're anticipating after this budget year, we'll, we're gonna spend more than we're bringing in, but from this point forward, we should comfortably be making a profit and be in the black from this point forward. And that's assuming very little, there's no rate increases in there any longer, so it's just gonna be new account growth that's gonna drive that number from this point forward. The number of accounts will increase from seventeen-thirty-five to seventeen-forty-four, and so we didn't see very much growth in the sewer, but hopefully with the construction, we're seeing that that will start going up. Let's see, the sewer enterprise fund, oh, actually, this is the capital projects fund, we're rolling over about twenty thousand, we're transferring two-hundred-and-fifty to the general fund, a hundred-and-fifty for aquatics and a hundred for police, that's the same amount we did this last year. Prior to that, we'd always just been doing a hundred thousand for police, last year was the first year we did a hundred-and-fifty for aquatics. We're transferring the seventy-five to HERF. We have the Yavapai Drainage Project and grant matches. So all in all, and this, I apologize, this is the capital improvement fund, which is what, the one percent sales tax that we keep that money in, we're budgeting, we're not spending everything we're bringing in, we're not planning on spending everything that we're projecting to come in, so we're gonna have about a hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars added to our reserves next year if we keep the budget the same. And as we go through this process, I mean, nothing's really writ, written in stone. If there's priorities or things that you guys wanna see or change, this is the time that we add and adjust so we can. Being a balanced budget, though, depending on the magnitude, if you guys wanna add something or delete something, if you add something, we probably oughta go and see where we can make it up by deleting something or, you know, cause we'll start reducing that reserve amount. So, it's a balancing act, but you guys, of course, have the discretion to make any changes or recommend any changes or initiatives that you'd like us to do, so.
Yes, sir.
Joe, can you back up to, to the sewer, the sewer plant? We had six-hundred thousand.
I got a bunch there, keep going up. We'll go back. Next one up. Right. This one right here, this one right here, yes, sir. You get that? Thanks, sir.
Right out of my mouth.
Right there, right there, okay, sorry about that.
Investing six-hundred thousand in plant upgrades through next budget year. Was that our total repair cost? I thought.
It was under six-hundred, it was about five-hundred-and-eighty thousand. The biggest portion of that in this next budget year was a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in filters. So we have, I believe, about ninety-one, three-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand that we're gonna spend next budget year. We've already spent the balance, or will by the end of June thirty.
So we should be at tip-top shape at this point with this amount of money?
Right.
Okay, nice.
And the, the thing that I've already seen is our, last year we didn't know what it's gonna take to operate the plant, so we threw a bunch of money at it. And this year, though, we're able to really look at those operating expenses, cause we're just like sludge removal, how much propane, all those operating costs that we're gonna incur year after year. So we put really big budget numbers in, and this year we've got those fine tunes, so our operating expenses really have decreased, and we're hoping that with the efficiencies of all the plant upgrades, that they'll continue to be able to decrease, you know, not significantly, I don't think, but, you know, what if we shave five or ten percent off for the next couple of years?
Sure, but we had originally talked about having to, to space this out over a number of years.
Right.
We're actually gonna be able to get it done in one year.
I think we can, I think we completely can, and particularly because we have that three-hundred-and-fifty in repair and replacement, and that's money that, it's basically been put in fifty thousand dollars a year away in our, in a savings account. And WIFA recommends we do it, they don't require it, but we do it because the plant, we took out a twenty-year loan on the plant, and after ten years or so, you're gonna have to make some repairs. And that's, so that's the point, we didn't have to go back to WIFA and say, hey, we need three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So we did the right thing, it turned out really well.
Good. Thank you.
With that, I'll turn it over to Laura.
All right, I have a quick PowerPoint presentation. I gave you a hard copy of it as well. Thank you. Okay, so personnel and benefits, the fun stuff I'm gonna be discussing. I thought I'd start out with giving you a history of our FTE count from two thousand, fiscal year 2012 to 2013. I thought this was kind of interesting information. An FTE stands for full-time equivalent, and basically what that is, is an example, is if you have two part-time employees, it's one FTE. So from fiscal year 2012 to twenty, the current upcoming fiscal year, we went from eighty-seven FTEs to ninety-two FTEs. Currently, we're at ninety-one, and we're projecting or recommending an additional FTE in the coming fiscal year. And I wanted to break that down, actually, let me go back one. I wanted to break down how we came up with one FTE. So for the town manager's budget, we moved one-half FTE to the customer service department and one-half FTE to the IT department. For the police department, we actually increased their staffing by half an FTE because we plan on having a mid-year hire of a police officer, which will actually become a full FTE in the following budget year. In the recreation department, we had originally started out with a half an FTE, but with actual hours worked and staffing, it came up to one true FTE, so we added an additional half FTE, and we've also added another half FTE as an increase in staffing. For the library, we added one FTE because when we took the part-time employees' actual hours worked, it actually equated to another FTE that we never accounted for, so we added it in there. In the parks department, we did have some attrition from the previous fiscal year, so we reduced the FTE count by one. For facilities, we increased it by half an FTE by changing the janitorial position from part-time to full-time. For fleet, we had attrition in that department, so we reduced the FTE count by one. And in road maintenance, we moved three FTEs to the engineering department because technically they should've been there to begin with. So, COLAs and merit increases for this upcoming fiscal year. Staff is recommending the following COLA and merit increases, and it has been included in the budget. We're recommending a two percent COLA based upon the Western Urban Areas Consumer Price Index, and also a merit increase that ranges anywhere from zero to one and a half percent that is based on pay-for-performance. The total projected cost for the COLA and merit increases would amount to approximately a hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars. I thought this was interesting as well, I find a lot of this, these statistics interesting. From two thousand and eight to the present, this is just an overview of COLAs that have been granted as well as merit increases, and COLA is a cost-of-living adjustment, I'm not sure if I clarified that, and whenever a COLA is granted, what it does to our salary scales, it takes the entire salary scale, so if you grant two percent, it takes the whole thing and pushes it up by two percent. So we have a new salary scale. So from two thousand and eight to two thousand and, wow, two thousand and fourteen, we have not issued a COLA. In two thousand and eight, it was a tough year, there were layoffs, in two thousand and nine, there were furloughs. Furloughs, in an employment context, is a term used to describe an employee's decision to cut costs by reducing an employee's work hours, and that's what happened in two thousand and nine. The town was able to reinstate furloughs to the police department in two thousand and eleven, but non-PD was still furloughed. In two thousand and twelve, a class and comp study was done and the results were processed in that year or so. Increases varied based upon the class and comp, the results of the camp, comp and class study. In two thousand and thirteen, there was no merit increase, in two thousand and fourteen, they were able to give out merit increases based upon pay-for-performance. Two thousand and fifteen, we provided a one percent COLA, and this year, this coming fiscal year, we're, we're recommending that two percent COLA, and then the pay-for-performance merit increase ranging from zero to one and a half percent. Yes?
What's your pay-for-performance program?
We actually have an evaluation program that Cecilia, I think, was very instrumental in creating, and it really focuses on performance categories and the core values that were created by the staff. It also focuses on creating goals for upcoming, the upcoming year.
Is it a percentage of those, or how is it the money dividend?
It, it was quite interesting. Joe, Cecilia, and myself actually got together, and after each evaluation is done, conducted, presented, then based upon certain criteria, if you have, if the employee completed their self-evaluation, if they met their performance categories, if they completed their goals from the previous year, certain scores were given. And then what we did was, we took all those score sheets, we put them in a spreadsheet, and we ran scenarios of what can we afford, what can the budget handle? And this is the, the recommendation we're making based upon those six scenarios that we ran as a group.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it was quite interesting to go through.
You, you're not planning on a performance increase for the vice mayor, are you?
It's called decrease.
Wanted to know.
So what, what percentage of employees then would get a, a bonus, a performance?
I would say a majority of them get an increase, a, a majority fall into the one percent and one and a half percent. Usually you see a bell curve of where most people get their, I guess where they fall. They fell in the meets and exceeds category. We had a lot of one percent and one and a half percents.
Yes, sir.
Is this hundred-and-forty thousand is included in the balanced budget? Okay, thank you.
Everything that I'm presenting has already been included in the budget as a, and this is just a.
Thanks for telling me now after I asked.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so bad at that, I'm sorry. So I wanted to give you an overview of the health insurance, it's a big portion of our benefits.
I'm sorry, Laura, I had a question, may I?
Yes.
Before we get too far ahead, cause I did have a question about FTEs.
Yes.
The full-time equivalents. Do you happen to have access to the information of what the full-time equivalents were from two thousand and seven?
Not right now, but I'm sure I can find something. I can definitely look in, into it.
What I was curious of is that I've, I think there's been some discussion at times, you know, are, we are still going through transition from when we were at, you know, the boom in oh-seven, and then we went through the crash, and I would, I just would like to, you know, see where we're at for personnel. I'm sorry, what?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, Councilwoman Chukka, I don't, is this on?
Yes.
The maximum number of FTEs we had through the boom was a hundred-and-twenty-one to a hundred-and-twenty-five. The lowest number that, that we had was eighty-seven, that was coming out of the recession and the layoff.
Okay.
And the eighty-seven number goes back to staffing that was present in two thousand four, two thousand and five.
Okay, and then we are currently at ninety-one, I believe? We are currently at ninety-one. At ninety-one, so I guess what I'm looking for is to, to avoid overworking our current staff, that as this is increasing, as, you know, as we're getting busier, because we are, and as the town can afford to, I just wanted to put it out there that I'd like to make sure that we're still at, you know, that we might not be able to start working towards increasing our staff.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good point. Okay, so health insurance. Yavapai Combined Trust is our trust that provides our medical, dental, vision, life, and short-term disability, and we meet on a quarterly basis. We met in March of two thousand and sixteen, and some of the things that we discussed was the insurance fund reserves, the future claims and trends, the projection of those future claims and trends, and what our insurance premiums, premiums would be for the upcoming fiscal year. The current reserves, as they stand, are at fifteen million dollars. The reserve policy states that we should have at least eight-point-six million, so we're six-point-four million dollars, dollars in excess on our reserves, based upon the policy. With regards to the future claims, from the costs from July two thousand and fifteen to February of two thousand and sixteen, those claims costs were actually twelve-point-eight percent less than the prior year, which is a great thing. And our overall loss ratio was at ninety-point-one, meaning we brought in more contributions, or the contributions were in excess of the total claims and expenses that we paid to date. So with that information, we made a motion to approve a two percent premium increase to be passed on each member for your medical, your prescription, and your short-term disability, and no premium increase to the dental and vision. If we wanted to hold our reserves level at fifteen million, we would've had to have passed a nine percent premium increase. We felt with the reserves and with the projection of the future claims and trends, two percent was acceptable. So that's why we came up, the board came up with a two percent. So what does that mean to us? I kinda wanted to break that out, too, and what the recommendations are from staff that have been included in the budget. We, as staff, are recommending to continue to cover the employee-only medical, dental, vision, and group-term life insurance premiums as we currently do. We're also recommending to continue to absorb, absorb thirty percent of the medical premiums and twenty-five percent of the family dental, vision premiums as we currently do. What that means to the employees in the upcoming fiscal year would be that the employee-only coverage would be zero-dollar-a-month increase to them. If an employee were to select or elect the family premium medical coverage, that would mean an, an eleven-dollar-a-month increase to them in the form of a premium. If an employee were to pick up the basic, the family basic medical, it would be a one-dollar-a-month increase, and for the family high-deductible health plan medical, it would be a five-dollar-a-month increase in premiums to them. We would also like to reintroduce the Short-Term Disability Plan, which would be one-hundred percent employer-paid. That amounts to approximately three thousand dollars in employer costs to pick up a short-term disability program. We also are recommending to increase the HSA employer contribution to, by three dollars a month. So if an employee picks up the high-deductible health plan, which is the medical plan, they have an attached HSA program where they can set aside monies for future qualified medical expenses. We are recommending to increase that on the employee's behalf by three dollars a month, so basically giving them an additional three dollars a month. We also are recommending to increase the employee credit that the employee uses to shop for benefits by twelve dollars a month. All of that, all of the recommendations listed, amounts to an anticipated increase of a hundred-and-sixty-two, or sixteen-thousand-two-hundred dollars, sorry, I added a zero, so sixteen-thousand-two-hundred dollars. So it sounds like a lot, but I think it's a really good investment for the amount of money. All right, also I wanted to point out that the ASRS are pension updates. This is where we are required to contribute to the pension fund, and the employee is required to contribute to the pension fund. For the ASRS program, which is non-PD, the increase would be point-oh-one percent for the employee and the employer, for the PSPRS, which is the Police Officers Pension Fund, their side, the employee contribution would not increase by any figure. The employee would increase from twenty-one-point-six-seven percent to twenty-three-point-eight-two, and I wanna say that's like just above two percent increase for the employee, two-point-one-five percent increase. So that will happen effective July first. This is just information, if you wanna take a look at it later, this is what we received from the Yavapai Combined Trust when we met as a board to discuss previous premiums and current recommended premium increases for the future year. You can see the breakdown of the actual costs that the employer would incur. The next page is the benefit premiums for the employee, these are the premiums that we are going to roll out to the employees and what their cost would be. They are also given a credit of six-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars to basically shop for benefits. And what that six-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars covers is basically employee-only coverage for any benefit that they select. There is a, the difference in cost for family coverage is what they would pick up, and the increases were nominal for them in that area. This, I wanted to share with you as, as well, this is the last slide, this is just a, a history of benefit increases to our health insurance plans. Twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve was a, was a big year in increases, and you can kinda see that the average five-year increase for the premier plan, the basic medical and the medical, high-deductible health plan, they've been ranging anywhere from zero to five percent for the last five years. So, and overall, the five-year average for all benefits has been three-point-one percent. I, I found that pretty interesting.
What's STD, Laura?
Short-term disability, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Why, do you have one? STD? Short-term disability?
Okay, let's move along on that one.
Thank you for your time.
Wait, wait, I got one question. Can we go back to pension update, real quick?
Yes, yes.
Can you, I'm curious why the PSPRS is different than the ASRS as far as employee contribution and employer contribution? Can you explain that to me?
I cannot explain it as well as maybe somebody else could in this room, maybe Joe or Cecilia, they are two separate plans.
State mandated. Legislature passed the social rates.
Blondie. Most, most PSPRS are twenty-years retirees, and ASRS is not twenty-years, they're twenty-five, thirty-years, what I understand.
There's a structural difference between the two systems. ASRS is one giant pool here in Arizona, and everybody's money goes into it and it performs the way it performs. PSPRS, each locality has its separate deal, and some, some of the, the local blends have not been performing well at all. And the board that controls PSPRS has known that for a long time, and they haven't changed the system. And now, there's this shock effect where communities across Arizona are facing huge dollar signs to catch up, and that's where Prescott's deficit, you know, they were talking about that seventy million dollars. Their fund has not been performing, but people have been retiring out of that fund and taking huge. and taking huge chunks because of the way their retirement was structured. And now, the fund's upside down. And that's a board issue at the state level that the state's trying to deal with. The solution that they've got is gonna take twenty or thirty years to make this thing right. It's not gonna happen overnight.
So, we're paying for somebody else's poor decision-making once again?
I would say that's accurate.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Did you bring up mine? Mine?
Mine's better.
Mine will be short and sweet.
That's what Laura said, too.
Wasn't that pretty short and sweet? So, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, actually, I just have one slide. So, these are the divisions I'm going to go over, and I'm only going to highlight some of the changes or anything that's significant that I think you might wanna know. And please feel free to interrupt me and ask any questions. So, the first one is our prosecutor's office. As many of you are now aware, I believe Rob, uh, Mr. Smith did send out an email saying that, uh, the City of Prescott has decided not to renew our contract for prosecutorial services. So, we will be hitting the street with an RFQ shortly. I'm still waiting for paperwork from the, uh, attorney so that we can put that out on the street. Uh, I can't remember the exact date when that cuts off, but we still have time to get an attorney hired, a new prosecutor. Uh, right now, we're hoping we can get one for fifty thousand or less. I think that's likely to happen, so. That's really, otherwise, their budget is flat. So, there's nothing to say about them. Does anybody have a question about the prosecutor's office?
Do we know?
Yes, Ms. Vice Mayor?
Do we know why they chose?
Um, well, I do know a, uh, senior paralegal they have in the office is retiring. She is actually retired at the end of April. And I think it gave them an opportunity to restructure. When they first, when John Palladini first started over there at the City of Prescott, the rumors were, you have too many people on your staff. And he had heard word that we had talked to the county about getting a prosecutor on board, and he had approached us. And he said, I'd like to keep all my people very busy. And, uh, Mr. Halsted, who's been doing our work for us over here, apparently is very good in their water law, and they're wanting his services more and more over in City of Prescott, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Is this gonna slow down in cases in the court?
Our, our goal is to not have that happen. Yeah, our goal is to have a seamless transition. So, right now, I'm telling you that, but if we get no responses to RFQ. But I do think the City of Prescott will work with us and, and extend it for a month at a time if we need to, so.
And there's probably attorneys available. I've, I've met a few of them, so there's.
I think there's a few out there on the street.
There's a few out there.
Yeah, and I will say with, uh, the new judge that we have here, uh, in this last year, the way, uh, the court schedule has happened, it, it should make it fairly simple for us to give a, a pretty straightforward, um, here's what we need from you. And it can be fairly relied on for someone who wants to leave their practice and come over here for two half-days a week. And that, they don't have to deviate very much or very often from that.
Cool.
So, I don't think we'll have too much trouble filling it. Any other questions on the prosecutor?
Any other questions? No? Thank you.
Okay, MIS and GIS, that's the next, uh, division. Um, we have moved or are moving over a halftime person, uh, into the MIS department. She is taking courses and going to help support Spencer, guests who most of you have met. And, uh, so hopefully, we can beef up his department a little bit. He's been sorely understaffed for years. Poor guy. Uh, however, the change is, he's got a twenty-three percent increase in his budget. It's not due to staffing. Most of it is due to some things that are happening. One of them is some, um, upgrades we have to do to our television station because we have to go on high-definition, everything's changing there. Um, we are going to, uh, do security enhancements to most of our buildings. We already have it in this building, we have it in Public Works Development Services, we have it in the court, we have it in the library. But we're gonna do it in all our buildings. Um, we found that to be important. And then, we've just got a new server that we're gonna be, every year, we're gonna be adding new servers to our virtual servers, so. Those are pretty much our costs for there. Do you have any questions? You look like you have a question.
No, I was very attentive, paying attention to you.
Okay. Uh, the library is, uh, completely flat. There's no change to their budget at all. Um, well, there's a three thousand dollar change. It's mostly due to just little tweaks in their salaries and fringe benefits. Uh, otherwise, there's no change at all in their operating budget. Uh, they continue to operate mostly on part-time help. Uh, they only have three full-time staff members, a children's librarian, a library director, and a cataloger. All the rest are part-time help. Any questions on the library?
No.
Senior Center, um, two increases in that department. Uh, it's a twelve percent increase from a two forty-two, two hundred and forty-two thousand dollar budget to two hundred and seventy-one. Uh, two increases would be, we're taking a part-time person, not quite to full-time, but benefit eligible, so he is getting benefits. Uh, and then, food costs, unfortunately, those keep going up every year, even though, uh, gas prices were going down. We were hoping transportation costs would help, but food costs, uh, just do not go down. Any questions on the senior center?
No.
You're making my job really easy. Uh, customer service, uh, this is a brand-new department that you haven't been exposed to before. I should say, division. Um, last year in November, we did hire a customer service supervisor, and she has three and a half FTEs that she manages. Uh, she mostly is focusing on Public Works Development Services and the building department. Some of our main focuses for next year, we're gonna be remodeling the front counter over in Development Services and Public Works and put computers up on the front, but also extend it so we have more room. We're gonna focus on technology and how we can leverage some of that to make the jobs more efficient. And then, lastly, um, we're gonna start standardizing policies and procedures. We're doing that through, um, writing SOPs. We're working with the finance department to, um, kinda standardize, well, how we're handling sewer accounts, how we're handling utility accounts. We don't really have some of the financial policies, policies in place, so we're trying to make sure that we can be consistent with our customers. I think one of the things that we get criticized for is our inconsistency to the public. So, we're trying to remedy that, so. Any questions on customer service? Yes, Mr. Turner?
One question. Over here, when we talked about, uh, in personal changes.
Mm-hmm.
It said, in that department, that there was a half FTE increase.
In customer service?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, good point.
So.
The person who normally used to work out at our front counter out here, um, will now be supporting, uh, MIS halftime, and will be supporting the two department heads over in customer service at Public Works and Development Services. So, not necessar, she's backup for the front counter. And then, when I said three and a half FTEs, so, she's backup to the front counter only when they need her, but otherwise, she's supporting the Development Services and Public Works directors.
So, where does the supervisor that was hired come in? Where does, where does she fall in this?
She supervises, like, she works with both the department heads and the staff out front. Like, the department heads tell her what the needs are, and she tries to make sure she gets the right staff with the right skills to be doing the right jobs. She's working to standardize their work, she's working on the technology. Um, she's overseeing all of that, what's happening.
I guess what I'm, I think I'm, what I'm understanding is there was actually one and a half people increase. And, and it says there's a half. So, where does the supervisor fall within our, in our?
Okay, I guess I don't know how they count it from last year to this year. I don't know, I don't, I don't know. I, I, she, what, I don't know if, how she was included in last year's budget and then not, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Oh, Mike Boebe. She replaced Mike Boebe. Mike Boebe was, uh, half FTE, wasn't he?
He was a half FTE.
In there, um, when he replaced her, she came on board.
I, you know.
So, prior to that, they had three and a half FTEs, right?
Three and a half, 'cause that would be.
She came on board, that's four.
Yeah, he went from lean officer over to halftime in water and utilities, or, I'm sorry, sewer. Halftime in sewer and halftime as customer service manager or supervisor. So, that would've been a halftime, or point five increase in the FTEs there, too, yeah.
So, we're only missing one point five right now. Okay.
Good catch. Any other questions on customer service?
That hundred and eighteen thousand dollars under customer service, that's for the computer and the, the rebuild of the, of the offices or the waiting room thing?
Oh, I'm, no. Hundred and eighteen thousand? Oh, yeah, I want you, 'cause there's a lot of puts and takes on this.
Yeah, one of the things I'll talk about tomorrow night is we changed the way we've done our interdepartmental charges. And we were charging in and out of every department in the general fund. And when you looked at it, the net effect was just like, I'm not gonna, like, a hundred and fifty thousand to go to water and sewer. So, what we've done, and I'll show you the chart tomorrow, so I'll explain it. But essentially, the hundred and eighteen is the portion of this department we're charging to the general fund for the planning and building services, public works they do. And then, we allocate the rest of the costs to water and to sewer. So, and this is really the only department that we're allocating out of the general fund now. We've cleaned it up. It's gonna be so much simpler for, for particularly the public to understand what we're doing. Last year, we had, every department had put ins and outs, ins and outs. It was just too confusing. And, and the bottom line is that the impact of the dollars, it just didn't make sense to do it that hard. So, the hundred and eighteen thousand you see is the total department costs are being coded to the general fund. The additional costs are going to water and sewer fund, if that helps. And I'll show you tomorrow, I'll have a schedule for you tomorrow.
Any other questions on customer service?
No.
Town manager, um, that budget for the town manager has actually decreased, and part of that, well, not part of it. The reason is because Sal, uh, Sandra's salary got moved out of the town manager's office, as well as part of my salary went to customer service.
Okay.
Mayor and council, um, I don't know if you've discussed the potential for increases for the mayor and council, right? Okay. Your budget has increased by thirty-one percent. Um, Laura, do you wanna speak to that, though, so, because otherwise, the operating budget is flat, um?
That's that merit increase that I thought you guys, I suspected you were giving to the vice.
I'm sorry, so currently, town council, uh, members, um, receive a, a monthly wage of one hundred dollars a month. Um, the mayor receives two hundred dollars a month. We did a survey of cities, towns in the area, in the region, to see how we compare. We were very low. Um, so, we recommended an increase to, uh, the mayor, four hundred dollars a month, and vice, vice mayor, council members, two hundred dollars a month. So, that is the recommendation that is also included in the budget. Thank you.
I didn't think that we could do that.
You can do.
I don't understand.
Yes, we can. All right. So, you can vote it, but it doesn't come in for the, until the next council is seated. And so, um, if the vice mayor succeeds in kicking me out of office, I won't get that raise.
You'll get a raise.
But, yeah, you, you can, uh, you can't vote yourself in a raise while you're in.
And, so, we've put it in the budget, and it'll come back to council in a resolution for you guys to adopt, but it won't go into effect until the new council is seated. And we thought it's a good idea, you know, she did the study, but it's a good idea since we're changing council. You know, we'll have a hundred percent change, or seven new seats, so.
Big money, you might wanna stay around.
Might wanna stay around. One, one, one other point for, uh, for many that are on council, it'll help defray some of the costs of being on council, uh, because if you're running a business, you have to pay someone to cover that time, so.
So, I guess the point is, um, what you already had is your budget balance included this amount already in there. Um, so, there was a increase in the mayor and council budget. Otherwise, the operating budget is flat. Any questions on that?
No questions.
Okay, the last budget is a non-departmental budget, and that's where we put things that don't necessarily, um, get costed to a particular department. So, in there are legal ser, it's a one million dollar, um, budget, but it includes our legal services, our property insurance, um, outside agency funding, which includes a chamber. It includes, um, contingencies of four hundred thousand. And we did include the seventy-five thousand dollar transfer to her, that Joe spoke about earlier. And, uh, the first year that we buy new technology, we usually include it in the non-departmental budget. And then, after that, it gets included in your own department budget. So, we have twenty thousand dollars in there for technology upgrades, so. Any questions on the non-departmental? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was sure thankful we had contingencies when that gas line leak came, so. All right. Next.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Got my right hand, the real brains of the operation is right here, so if we have any questions, we got her. I am sure you have all reviewed the court budget. Yep, we're real low-tech.
Yeah.
Real low-tech. We're still using pens and paper, and we think we're high-tech when we slap something on a computer, but we're mostly people business. And so, we've got people, we've got paper products, and we've got computers and furniture. So, the budget, I think it went the direction y'all wanted it to from last year, went down. And, uh, let's see, I think the only figure that's, other than salaries and, and things like that, is professional services. That's up a little bit, but we have an audit next year. We have an audit every three years, and a financial audit. And so, Joe kinda estimated what that was, and I have real good faith in our auditors. They've been doing the auditing of the court and the town, doing Humboldt for years, they're wonderful.
Good.
And let me reassure you, I am very, uh, I'll be very happy to get a new prosecutor in, not because the old prosecutor wasn't performing, but there's a lot of talent out there. You know, Cecilia is afraid, will one person respond? I'm afraid too many will respond, and they're good. And we know each other in the legal community. And so, we've got a lot, a lot of people to choose from, good talent. And at the court, we've discussed what happens. Yeah, if there's a lag in any time, and I don't anticipate there is, but we can, we can make it work. And so, no, I'm really, really ecstatic about a change. We'll be able to get even further with what I think are town goals, with a prosecutorial agency that's devoted to us.
Good, good.
Yeah. And, and Prescott's prosecutors and Prescott's legal department, their primary responsibility is to Prescott. It's not to us, so this'll be good. Are there any questions, though? 'Cause I'm not gonna take your time if this is all pretty transparent to you.
Just one quick statement, I'm, I apologize for not getting back with you on, on using some of your, uh, community service folks for, uh, I was hoping we'd get to use some of those for cleaning up tumbleweeds for those type of projects, but, uh, we've, we've had, uh, a few little ex, moments of excitement here. But hopefully, next year, we'll be able to do that.
Now, don't give up so easily. Michael and I talked about that just today.
Okay.
He is very excited about that, and Laura is helping with giving kind of some general parameters to the departments who would like to use community service workers. So, that should get the excitement going.
Good.
And what we wanna do with Public Works and with Michael's people, is see if we can get something a little bit more formal going, so it's not just, I'll give you an example. So, let's say they decided, once a month on Fridays, they were gonna use community service workers. Then, it would be very easy, when somebody comes in the court, I just order 'em. You show up this date, this time, and you're gonna do this, whatever they tell you. And so, I think Michael's take on it is very positive. And so, and so, we're going ahead, even though we didn't get real far on what we talked about.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent.
Did she say that since you were snoozing, they're moving on without you?
She said it in a nice way. That's, that's actually pretty accurate, isn't it?
I just had a question for Judge. Um, how do you feel with your staff? Does everybody feel, do you feel like you have enough staff there and everybody's at a good workload?
Oh, we're in great shape.
Okay.
We've, we've got a fabulous staff now, absolutely fabulous. I think the public is loving them. We instituted, uh, a little comment box about halfway through the year last year. And I gotta tell you, the comments in this year, since we did some employee changes. And I gotta tell you, the comments in this year, since we did some employee changes, are marvelous, they're very uplifting. And I think their workload is good. Could they absorb, now, of course, you realize, our workload comes from the Police Department. Other than people coming in for orders of protection or injunctions, it comes from the police. So, if the police are working hard, if they're producing many things, then we're gonna have to work harder, too. They've had a real problem with the handheld computers that we were talking about because the court offered to offset several units for them. And the court has restricted funds that are very appropriate for that that are somewhat difficult for us to use in other situations, but we haven't been able to get the, get it working. And so, they've gone back in the last couple of months to a lot of handwritten citations. That takes up time for court staff. That's, that's huge. Which is a part of the reason why I was gung-ho about, yeah, let's, we'll buy you some if you need them, because this helps us, too. But I think our staff could absorb more work. But if, if the police just went crazy, then probably next year or year after, we'd probably have to, have to bring on another clerical person, another clerk.
Okay.
But I don't anticipate it right now.
All right, cool.
On the last audit, a number of years ago, they found a bunch of extra money. It went to the state. Did we ever get a resolution on that where it all went?
We sure did.
All right. I just never heard about it. I'm sure it may have been here, doesn't mean I'm here all the time.
Basically, what we did was, we had the AOC, which is Arizona Offices of the Court, run us reports to tell us what kind of restitution we collected, what kind went out, dollar amounts. So, we went through all the case files, looked at all that. We sent restitution checks out if we weren't sure whether those people got those restitution checks or not. We sent it out again and sent a letter and said, if you already received this, we want it back. Same thing with the bonds. Nobody sent the money back, of course, but this all went through Judge Mackey, who's the presiding judge. And his court administrator, Ralph, came and looked over all the paperwork before we did this. And then, the monies that were left over, we did a, a quarterly statement of how those funds were dispersed in the, in the past quarter and then did a calculation and dispersed those funds to those agencies, including the town, according to what we had done in the previous quarter.
Okay, I was just curious. I mean, remember, that was up in the air for a long time. And as long as it's resolved, I'm happy with that.
We now have, whatever money comes in, goes out to the penny. Everything balances to the penny now.
Good job.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. We don't like surprises.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions for the judge?
No.
All right.
Thank you all, have a good evening.
And thank you for, thanks for taking care of things while I was sleeping.
Well, Mayor and Council, the judge is being a little modest, too. They also are, they have another restricted fund called the Court Improvement Fund, and they're getting new carpet right now, and I believe doing some painting work and some office improvements with it, which relieves the general fund. Also, just on the revenue side, in fourteen fifteen, we took in about ninety-three thousand dollars in traffic fines. Next budget year, we're projecting about a hundred-and-nineteen million, or a hundred-and-nineteen thousand. I wish it was billion. So, we're seeing a nice, steady increase, even though the judge, we don't care what she finds or anything. We are seeing a good, steady increase in our fine revenue, too. So, they're doing a really good job over there. And Rhonda's doing wonderful. When she says she balances to the penny every month, she's actually doing that every month. It just comes out to the penny. So, she's, they're doing a really good job over there.
Cool, thank you.
I think the next item is, Jamie, I really don't have anything in finance. Our department's as flat as flat can be, just the increase in our audit costs. So, there's no change. I have no capital, so I'm really simple. So, I think the last tonight will just be Jamie talking about the town clerk's budget.
Excellent.
Good evening. Mine's gonna be short and sweet. I have a nineteen percent increase, and that's for the every-other-year little thing that we have called an election. So, most of it has to do with that. And then, I put a little extra money aside. Every three years or so, we send off all of the ordinances that you approved that changed the town code, and we get it codified into the town code. So, we're due for one of those. And as far as goals and things, in this next year, the funds aren't gonna really come out of my budget, but we're, well, some of it is, is we're just really, really gonna focus on technology. And that's kind of a town-wide thing, but it affects a lot of what we do in my office. So, we're kind of, other than the election and stuff, we're just focusing in on, on tech like crazy. That's really all the changes I had.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Well, Joe, if we're all done.
I do have one question to ask.
Fine.
Other items?
Other budget items.
Other budget items.
That's just, just in case.
Just for tomorrow, maybe you've already got it down. I know we had talked about with Spencer putting an antenna up there and getting rid of our cable bill. So, one would offset the other.
Okay.
Are we still doing that, or is that not scheduled for next year?
It is still in the budget and being worked on right now, yes.
Okay.
So, in fact, Michael can address that tomorrow?
Yeah, we, we're gonna expend the, the budget line that Spencer currently has on the equipment that's necessary to make the system work. Michael is trying to get pricing on steel for the data tower at the library. And we are, we are letting it to bid a third time. And we're hopeful that we'll find a contractor. We think we've found a contractor or two that will respond. So, we're hopeful to have that lifting off the ground here.
I got Lee Dudley for the Lions. He'll go ahead, he can't see, but he can weld.
We'll, we'll get the antennas and the steel, and then, after we're in the new budget years, when we'll undertake the construction.
Okay, I mean, I was, we had one to offset the other, is my understanding. So, I would not like it to get lost.
Cool. Lee Dudley. Can't see, but he can weld. All right. If there's no other questions, all right, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion when you adjourn, sir. Second it.
Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we adjourn. Thank you.